This conference will now be recorded.
I didn't know he was that far.
Yep.
All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting. The Sedalia City Council, the order. First item on our agenda is prayer followed by pledge of allegiance. Captain Massey up the floor.
Could you stand as able and join me in our invocation? Dear Lord and Father of all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance. The Sedalia City Council, the board members, staff, mayor and administrator, meet to hear about, to discuss and make decisions for the betterment of our city and its people. Grateful for their service and their dedication to this community. We ask your protection of all of our first responders, police, fire, sheriff, EMTs, ambulance, hospital staffs, all who labor 24/7 to serve and protect us, often at their own peril. And tonight, the fire department is honoring Kyle Rup for 20 years' service and Nathan Dicey for 10 years' service. Their service pins, I'm sure they are extremely well-earned and we thank them so much for their service to us. We are grateful for this country of ours, the United States of America, our constitutional republic. Thousands have died to create and preserve it all of these years and now, on Thursday, July 4th, we celebrate that anniversary. And we should never forget those who died forming this country, those serving our nation today, and many are. And today was the first day of the Battle of Gettysburg, the battle that kept our nation together, eventually ending the war between the states. We should stop and reflect on all that's gone on before us and hope for our future. We ask your protection for all of our military and civilians here and throughout the world serving this country today, keeping us safe from threats from without and threats, very sadly, from within. And now, as we leave tonight, please protect us and our loved ones, keep us from harm until we meet again, and all this we pray in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Bogus is absent. Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Bliss. Okay, first item on our agenda is some service awards. Up first, we have the fire department. I'll go ahead and invite up Chief Irwin to go ahead and present them.
If I could have Kyle Rup and Nathan Dicey come to the front. So today, I was working on a huge, long speech for these guys and what can be said about them, and I know that they would be embarrassed by it. Kyle Rup is celebrating 20 years of service. Kyle knows more about fire trucks and pumping operations than probably any member of our fire department. I'm very proud to have him. I'm very glad that he's given me 20 years of service. I'm hoping he gives me at least 10 more. Ten more. Ten more. And he's well-liked, everybody likes him, and he is the go-to guy for anything that comes to operations on our fire trucks. Nathan Dicey, captain with the Sedalia Fire Department, is celebrating 10 years of service. I at least got him for 10 more. Nathan is a very well-rounded person. He just participated in our lieutenant's testing promotion. He got a, I think he got an education on that. I'm very proud of these two individuals. Congratulations on 20 and 10 years.
Thank you. Thanks for your service. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate you.
Congrats, Nathan.
Outstanding, boss. Thank you, Captain.
Congrats, Kyle.
Good work, boss.
All right, up next, we'll invite up Chief Irwin to present his service award.
Good evening, council. Detective Mark Cherry, could you come forward with me, please? Detective Cherry joined the department on June 15th of 2014. In 10 years, Detective Cherry has established himself in the department as a trainer in firearms, defense tactics, ground fighting, officer wellness and crisis intervention, amongst other things that he teaches our department. Mark brought CIT, Crisis Intervention Training, to the Sedalia Police Department, and he has trained not only all of our members, but members all across the state, and helped design the CIT program that we have in Missouri now. Mark has contributed more to our agency than I have time to stand up here and talk about, and realistically, he's probably already mad at me that I've said this much. So I will end with this. Detective Cherry is a prime example that you don't have to have rank to be a leader. He is listened to in our department from brand-new officers to the chief of police. We all value what he has to say and his direction and his leadership all through the agency. Our community is lucky to have him, and I'm happy to present him as 10-year pin. Congratulations.
Thank you, Detective Cherry.
Thanks, Mark. Good show, detective.
Now, we'll invite up Finance Director Pyle to present her service award.
I have the opportunity to present Jamie Snew with her five-year award. Jamie's been with the city of Sedalia for five years. She started in the clerk office, serving a few months, and quickly transitioning into the finance department. Jamie demonstrates the most excellent customer service skills. This is a natural ability for her. She's kind and personable, greeting visitors by their name, speaking directly to them and identifying what they need when sometimes they're not even sure what they need. Jamie has the ability to take a project and identify processes and rules for successful implementation. The city of Sedalia is truly enriched by having Jamie on staff. Thank you for your service.
Congratulations.
Outstanding. Good for you.
All right, moving along, we have our retirement awards. The first one is for Monty Richardson, our IT director. He is retiring after 37 years and seven months of service. Let's give him a big round of applause.
I really didn't want to be here tonight. Reflecting back on my 37, did you say 37 or 38?
37 and seven months.
Thank you. 37 years and seven months of service. I am only here because of the generosity and the support of a whole lot of people. From Doug Bowler, who was the chief when I was hired, to, uh, I can't remember his name, Sylvie, Arlene's husband, Randy. Randy, thank you. He was one of my first, one of the first officers I met and one of my first supervisors. There were a lot of people that saw a lot of potential in me that allowed me to train up and become a better police officer and allowed me to do some things and make a difference on the department and in the community. Probably one of the things that I did, and I wasn't the only one, but one that I kind of take pride in, was developing the, helping to develop the community policing program back in the day. I certainly wasn't the leader, but I really loved that and enjoyed the impact I made in the neighborhood that I was assigned to and made a lot of friends. It was because of the efforts of Chief Lichhour and Chief Tagonia that I became involved in the IT program that we have now. At the time, we really didn't have much more than a couple of little pockets, and because of their support and Keith Reichberg's desire to build up something, I was given the opportunity to start basically from scratch and build what we have to the point that it is now. I am but a small peg in that whole process, and as I was going through my old files, I found some stuff where for like three years, I was thanking Keith Reichberg for the opportunity to be the IT manager and to be playing with all these neat toys. We've come a long way as a city, and I did not know until I started getting involved with administration and sitting in on council meetings just how important your all's direction is. I say that in true sincerity, and I want to thank you all and your predecessors for the support they've given me and the IT department as we've gone through our journey. I'm proud to say that there's a team that I'm leaving behind that will serve the city well, to the best of their capacities. I think they have some strong desires to be a part of something. We'll see how that turns out, or you will. I'm going to be somewhere else and doing what I love, which is beekeeping, but I do thank you all for the opportunity that I've had to serve this city for 37 years and seven months. I didn't think I'd make it this far. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Hell of a run, boss. Good for you.
Monty is helping to grow appreciation for your service. Congratulations.
We need the car back. Need to get a car.
Little fire there. It'll be nice. There you go.
Right, thank you.
Yeah. All right, for our next retirement award, we're going to invite up Roger from the cemetery to go ahead and present that.
Good evening. I'd like to have Michael Holman come up and join me if you would, please. Mike has been at Crown Hill Cemetery for a total of 27 years and nine months as a full-time employee. Had four years prior to that as a part-time employee, so almost 32 years. We're going to surpass that because I'm going to hang on to him in a part-time role to fill in a new crew leader's position to help me train and everything, but having 32 years of knowledge at the cemetery, and I've been there almost 15 years, and Mike has helped me through many, many things that we've transitioned through, through the years, and I couldn't have done it without him, and there's no doubt about that. Between the two of us, we always look at each other and most of the time it comes up that we don't ever forget anything. So we go back, it may take us a few minutes, but we normally can put it all back together. So it, no, I'm really happy for you, Mike, that you've got the opportunity to retire and spend a few more days on the lake and think about me while you're there, and that's something both of us like to do. And spend a few more days in the woods and enjoy your retirement and everything, and we'll definitely miss you, but thank you for your service.
Good for you, boss.
You bet.
Mike, did you want to say a few words?
You know what? City of Sedalia has given me, you know, a good outlook on what we got here in Sedalia. It's been a long run. I'd like to say it was easy on my body, but it wasn't, and that's fine. It was going to get broke down somewhere or another, but I'd just like to thank the city for giving me the opportunity to have a career here, and I would like to see some more young people step up and take advantage of that. So if we can get them to do it, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, moving along, we have the approval of the previous session's amendments dated June 17, 2024. Do I have a motion in a second? Motion to approve. I have a motion in a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding the meeting minutes? Have you heard none? All those in favor? All those opposed? Approve. Now, we have the roll call of our standing committees. Up first, we have Finance Administration. Vice Chairman Oldham, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. We have three items tonight. The first two items are consistently the same thing, the passing of the Pregnant Workers' Fairness Act. We need to amend our maternity fraternity leave policy, and the second thing we need to do is need to adopt the Pregnant Workers' Fairness Act policy.
Okay, we'll begin with the first ordinance. Call for the reading of the first ordinance in association to this matter.
Bill number 2024-117, an ordinance amending the maternity paternity leave policy.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for session reading. Do I have any council discussion regarding this bill? Having heard none? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-117, an ordinance amending the maternity paternity leave policy.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for session reading. Do I have any council discussion regarding this bill? Having heard none? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-117, an ordinance amending the maternity paternity leave policy.
Second reading.
I have a motion in a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none? Roll call, please.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus is absent. Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Okay, now, we'll go ahead and call for the reading of the second ordinance in relation to this matter.
Bill number 2024-118, an ordinance adopting the Pregnant Workers' Fairness Act policy.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none? Roll call, please.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus is absent. Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Okay, now, we'll go ahead and call for the reading of the second ordinance in relation to this matter.
Bill number 2024-118, an ordinance adopting the Pregnant Workers' Fairness Act policy.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for the second reading of this ordinance. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-118, an ordinance adopting the Pregnant Workers' Fairness Act policy.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for the second reading of this ordinance. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-118, an ordinance adopting the Pregnant Workers' Fairness Act policy.
Second reading.
I have a motion in a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-118, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding fire outdoor warning siren purchase.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for a second reading of this ordinance, amending the budget. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-118, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding fire outdoor warning siren purchase.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion in a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none? Roll call, please.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes. Next, we have a ordinance that is approving and accepting the purchase of the five outdoor sirens. Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2024-121, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of five outdoor warning sirens.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-121, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of five outdoor warning sirens.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion in a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none? Roll call, please.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes.
Part of the improvements made to address concerns of train blocking, road crossings, when public safety vehicles need to cross includes the addition of cameras that will livestream directly to joint dispatch from fire stations. The viewing equipment cost is $85,3698 and was not anticipated when adopting the budget. Therefore, we need a budget amendment to do so.
Okay, in relation to this matter, we have a resolution and one ordinance. We'll go ahead and call for the reading of the resolution first.
Resolution 2093, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Sedalia, Missouri, stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year 2025.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve in a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding this? I do have a point of information for Chief Irwin. So the, will these cameras alert the fire department automatically or how does that work?
So the camera itself will not. The camera is stationed at Havel Park and it is sitting at engineer, engineer crossing. It can also be moved to CDM crossing. Part of this resolution and cost of this was the alerting for the main in Ohio, so anytime that the rail crossings activate, it sends the, an email to my command staff, sends me a text message, and then it also sends it to joint communications as well. So this is the ability for the fire personnel, if we get a call, they can look as they're leaving out the station to see if the engineer, if it has been missed, they can see if the engineer crossing is open for to take it to northeast Sedalia.
Very good. Any other council discussion? Having heard none? All those in favor? All those opposed? Resolution passes.
Now, we have the ordinance in relation to this budget amendment. Call for the reading of the ordinance. Bill number 2024-122, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding fire camera purchase and install.
Second reading.
I have a motion in a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-122, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding fire camera purchase and install.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion in a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none? Roll call, please.
Foster.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes.
Hell of a run, boss. Good for you.
Monty is helping to grow appreciation for your service. A look back.
We need the car back. Need to get a car.
Little fire there. It'll be nice. There you go.
Right.
There you go.
Glad to hear you.
All right, for our next retirement award, we're going to invite up Roger from the cemetery to go ahead and present that.
Good evening. I'd like to have Michael Holman come up and join me if you would, please. Mike has been at Crown Hill Cemetery for a total of 27 years and nine months as a full-time employee. Had four years prior to that as a part-time employee, so almost 32 years. We're going to surpass that because I'm going to hang on to him in a part-time role to fill in a new crew leader's position to help me train and everything, but having 32 years of knowledge at the cemetery, and I've been there almost 15 years, and Mike has helped me through many, many things that we've transitioned through, through the years, and I couldn't have done it without him, and there's no doubt about that. The, between the two of us, we always look at each other and most of the time it comes up that we don't ever forget anything. So we go back, it may take us a few minutes, but we normally can put it all back together. So it, no, I'm really happy for you, Mike, that you've got the opportunity to retire and spend a few more days on the lake and think about me while you're there, and that's something both of us like to do. And spend a few more days in the woods and enjoy your retirement and everything, and we'll definitely miss you, but thank you for your service.
Good for you, boss.
You bet.
Mike, did you want to say a few words?
You know what? City of Sedalia has given me, you know, a good, a good outlook on what we got here in Sedalia. It's been a long run. I'd like to say it was easy on my body, but it wasn't, and that's fine. It was going to get broke down somewhere or another, but I'd just like to thank the city for giving me the opportunity to have a career here, and I would like to see some more young people step up and take advantage of that. So if we can get them to do it, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, moving along, we have the approval of the previous session's amendments dated June 17, 2024. Do I have a motion in a second? Motion to approve. I have a motion in a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding this bill? Have you heard none? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-117, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding police dare purchase of Freddie the Fire Truck.
Second reading.
I have a motion in a second for a second reading. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-123, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding police dare purchase of Freddie the Fire Truck.
Second reading.
I have a motion in a second for a second reading. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-123, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding police dare purchase of Freddie the Fire Truck.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion in a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none? Roll call, please.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus is absent. Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
All right, motion passes. And that's all I have. Thank you, Vice Chairman Oldham. Up next, we have Public Safety. Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
At the last meeting, Chief Irwin gave an updated presentation of tornado siren coverage to address the concerns we had expressed earlier. Based on that information, we addressed staff to bring back a bit, a bit to utilize reserves to add five additional sirens that cost $175,000, so we need an ordinance to amend the budget for that amount.
Okay, so we, in regards to this matter, we have a resolution and two ordinances, which will be amending the budget and acquiring those five new sirens. We're going to call for the reading of the resolution first.
Resolution 2092, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Sedalia, Missouri, stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year 2025.
Motion to approve. I have a motion in a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-121, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of five outdoor warning sirens.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill, do we have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus is absent, and Hiller.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes.
Part of the improvement made to address concerns of train blocking, road crossing, when public safety vehicles need to cross includes the addition of cameras that will livestream directly to joint dispatch from fire stations. The viewing equipment cost is eighty-five, thirty-six, ninety-eight, and was not anticipated when adopting the budget, therefore, we need a budget amendment to do so.
Okay, in relation to this matter, we have a resolution and one ordinance. We'll go ahead and call for the reading of the resolution first.
Resolution 2093, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Sedalia, Missouri, stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year 2025.
Motion to approve. I have a motion to approve in a second, do we have any council discussion regarding this? I do have a point of information for Chief Irwin, so, the, will these cameras alert the fire department automatically, or how does that work?
So, the camera itself will not. The camera is stationed at Taville Park, and it is sitting at engineer, engineer crossing. It can also be moved to CDM crossing. Part of this resolution and cost of this was the alerting for the main in Ohio, so, anytime that the rail crossings activate, it sends the, an email to my command staff, it sends me a text message, and then it also sends it to joint communications as well. So, this is the ability for the fire personnel, if we get a call, they can look as they're leaving out the station to see if the engineer, if it has been missed, they can see if the engineer crossing is open for to take it to northeast Sedalia.
Very good. Any other council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution passes. Now, we have the ordinance in relation to this budget amendment, call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2024-122, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding fire camera purchase and install.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for a second reading of this bill, do we have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-122, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding fire camera purchase and install.
Final passage. Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill, do we have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus is absent, Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
All right, motion passes.
We need one more budget amend, oh, no, we don't need a budget amendment, because this isn't costing the city anything. But Freddie the Fire Truck was, is a robotic unit that will draw attention to you, to fire prevention activities. The DARE program, it was brought to their attention, and they decided that it might be a good, a welcome addition to the police and fire department presentation. So, that is what's going to happen, they are going to fund this Freddie the Fire Truck, and, which is a great way to get it, and allow the police and the fire departments to utilize it.
Very good. So, as this is a restricted fund to the, for the DARE program, we do need a budget amendment that's going to require a resolution and two ordinances. Who want to begin with the resolution, call for the reading of the resolution?
Resolution 2094, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Sedalia, Missouri, stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second, do we have any council discussion regarding this resolution? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now, we have the first ordinance in relation to this matter, call for the reading.
Bill number 2024-123, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding police dare purchase of Freddie the Fire Truck.
Second reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second for a second reading, do we have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-123, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding police dare purchase of Freddie the Fire Truck.
Final passage.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill, do we have any council discussion regarding this? Having heard none, roll call please.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus is absent, Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
All right, motion passes. Next, we have the second ordinance in relation to this matter, call for the reading.
Bill number 2024-124, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of Freddie the Fire Truck for the police and fire departments.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second in relation to this bill, do we have any council discussion?
I just want to add that I came up with the idea to approach the chief of police as the main person that raises hundred percent of the funds for the DARE program, and our scholarship money is solvent, and our surplus is solvent, we had money sitting there, instead of buying another scholarship, I thought this was a great way to increase our DARE program in the teaching with Freddie the Fire Truck, fire safety. I talked to the DARE officers, and they're going to try to implement a, in their DARE training, they're going to implement some fire safety training also, like, you know, when we were all in school, we always stand still, lay down, roll, that's not being taught now. And I, I think it's time we bring some of that back to our kids, and that's why we had the money, and I've seen it turned down three times in the budget meeting, because if, there was no funds for it, this is a way to broaden our DARE program. Our DARE program has two scholarships, we were the first DARE program in the state of Missouri to give scholarships, other programs seen what was happening, and now there's seven other programs in the state of Missouri that offer scholarships also. So, I want to be the leader, not the follower, and the leader of this is, is to kind of combine our fire prevention with our, with our, keeping our kids off drugs.
All right, very good. Any other council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-124, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of Freddie the Fire Truck for the police and fire departments.
Final passage.
Second. I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill, do we have any further council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus is absent, Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes.
Yes, I'd like, if we could, have Chief Irwin give a brief overview of our ISO grading.
Okay, I would like to put that in the form of a motion. I have someone.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
So, I didn't have a presentation. So, as you are aware, in March of this year, we had our ISO grading, where the ISO came in and they, they basically gave us our score. It took a number of months to get that. One of the reasons for that is, is that our ISO score had to go to a second panel to be reviewed. Anytime that they, a city either regresses or progresses, it has to go back for a second review from a different, from a different committee. I'm happy to announce that after review, that the city of Sedalia, in the first time since we've been ISO classified, is now an ISO Class II city. We have improved our ISO classification to a Class II. It does take effect October 1st. Insurance providers will see that that is going to be taking place, so generally, they will give that ISO II certification to, to their insurers, but officially, it is not going to affect till October 1st. But congratulations that we've done. A lot of stuff, a lot of work went into it, number of my personnel kind of hit it head on, they wanted, they wanted this, and I laid this at their feet, because they're the ones that actually earned it, not me, so, congratulations.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, anything further, Chairman Robinson?
No, thank you.
All right, moving along, we have Public Works up next, Chairman Hiller, you have four?
Okay, I've got a couple items here, first one is authorizing the change order, number one, for storm drainage improvements on Project Area 14, which is illegal there center in Ninth Street, when they dug, dug along, what I was told, they dug up the line, there was a line underneath it that was not on the map, and so, they need to put a full wave block in the drain in there, that's one reason why all that water was always backing up, because it had nowhere to drain, and that's what the change order is for, and the cost of additional work is nineteen thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars, but this is part of our grant.
Very good. All right, we'll call for the reading of the ordinance, authorizing this change order.
Bill number 2024-125, an ordinance approving and accepting change order number one for storm drainage improvements, project area number fourteen.
Second reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second for the second reading of this bill, do we have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-125, an ordinance approving and accepting change order number one for storm drainage improvements, project area number fourteen.
Final passage. Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill, do we have any council discussion? Heard none, roll call please.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus is absent, Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
All right, motion passes.
The second item I had is authorizing a TRIM grant application, and we need a resolution for the Department of Conservation of ten thousand dollars. From what I understand, this is just a continuation of what, a program that we're already in, and they're called the Tree City USA Program, and anyway, that's what we've got to do, is make sure that the city wants to still move forward with that.
Okay, very good, call for the reading of the resolution?
Resolution 2095, a resolution authorizing an application by the city of Sedalia, Missouri, for a tree resource improvement and maintenance TRIM grant through the Missouri Department of Conservation to continue to grow the city's urban forest.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve this resolution, do we have any council discussion regarding the resolution on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
All right, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Up next, we have Community Development, Chairwoman Foster, you have the floor.
I have one item that's being named, and it is the Main Street Licensing Agreement, and we need to approve it for that. The city has been using the Main Street approach to assist with and encourage the revitalization of our downtown. Through this program and the assistance of Maine, Missouri Main Street Connections with grants, we have organized Sedalia Main Streets under Director Simmons and Planner Downtown Specialist Corinna's leadership by utilizing this model. A huge amount of progress has been made, and the level of excitement and commitment to revitalization is much greater. In a relatively short amount of time, the city's status in the program has been restored to affiliate, and may, council provision agreement that essentially gives us the ability to continue to use their model and tools while we agree to abide by their guidelines on use of them. In connection with that agreement, Main Streets has presented us a trademark sub license agreement that allows us to use their trademarked materials underneath commission.
All right, call for the reading of the ordinance approving and accepting the trademark sub license agreement.
Bill number 2024-126, an ordinance approving and accepting the trademark sub license agreement between the city of Sedalia, Missouri, Sedalia Main Streets, and National Main Streets Center Incorporated for incorporating the Main Street America Program.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for second reading, do we have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-126, an ordinance approving and accepting a trademark sub license agreement between the city of Sedalia, Missouri, Sedalia Main Streets, and National Main Streets Center Incorporated for incorporating the Main Street America Program.
Final passage.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill, do we have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus is absent, Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
All right, motion passes. Uh, next item on our agenda is liquor licenses, call for the reading of the liquor licenses.
We have one new license and six renewals tonight, new license for Melissa Atkinson doing businesses to five eighteen provisions at five twenty South Ohio for liquor by the drink and sidewalk consumption, a renewal for Crystal Sims doing businesses Wood Supermarket Incorporated, fourteen hundred South Limit, Suite Three, for packaged liquor, Sunday sales and taste testing, Crystal Sims doing businesses Wood Supermarket Incorporated at seven oh one East Broadway for package sales and Sunday sales, Mary Jane Stewart doing businesses American Legion Post number six forty-two at two thousand sixteen West Main for liquor by the drink, Jeremy Klein doing businesses The Corner Lounge at sixteen oh four South Ohio for liquor by the drink and Sunday sales, Jeremy Klein doing businesses Cork and Bottle at thirty-eight oh six East Broadway for Sunday sales and packaged liquor, and Diana Green doing businesses Little Big Horn at one fifty South Limit, Suite one hundred for beer and wine.
Motion to approve and block.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve and block, do we have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Have any miscellaneous items from the City Council?
I have a couple items. First thing is, I want to mention that on the twenty-second, we had our day of action with United Way, we had three hundred and fifty-plus people out there doing a neighborhood cleanup, we, and projects around Pettis County, so, we have many city staff there as well, so, I want to appreciate them, I also want to appreciate Public Works, they helped us for the last week, they've been fitting into their schedule, going around and picking up the trash and everything, so, I appreciate Public Works, I appreciate Public Enforcement for helping us with that, with that annual project. The second thing I want to mention is, tonight, we passed for the cameras on the railroad tracks on July seventh, we'll be having a workshop for the Washington Street Bridge, so that we're aware that we're all making progress and we're moving forward on that. The final thing that I want to mention is something that I brought up in our previous council meeting. During the previous council meeting, I spoke on the need to move towards a three-station model, and I would be asking for a vote to reconsider that vote made and move towards a much needed three-model station. So, before I ask for that vote, I wanted to recap what I mentioned before. One, I mentioned our 2020 comprehensive plan, it shows the possible growth of industrial in the north and residential in the south. Four years later, that's proven true. We showed a 2019 feasibility study, which provided, which was provided to council the next day, and it showed that fire safety needs are being delayed, and are delayed and being met due to the size of our community and the amount and placement of our fire stations. Thirdly, we brought up our ISO rating, which I was privy to that information during that last council meeting, which is, our ISO rating, which is fifty percent of the score's calculation is based on the amount and the placement of our fire stations. Our new ISO rating is in jeopardy if we do not have a three-station model. So, I wanted to recap that and open up for discussion if we needed to, if there's any questions or any comments that need to be made before I ask for the motion.
Before I order, Mr. Chairman, you need to be in the prevailing side to make a motion to reconsider.
Yeah, council.
So, I need to make, I don't need to make a motion to reconsider, I just need to make a motion to move towards a three-station model.
As a new matter, yes.
Then, that would be in my motion, so, before I make that motion.
And actually, the discussion should happen after the motion, in a second.
Okay, I can repeat what I said afterwards if I need to, so, I will make a motion to move towards a three-station model.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, do I have council discussion regarding this matter?
Chief Irwin, could you please explain to us, I think there's some confusion on the ISO, it's my understanding that fifty percent of it is not due to placement of stations, could you help us understand that a little bit better, please?
So, in the ISO, there are a hundred and five point five points available to, to the city as a total score. Councilman Oldham is technically correct, we are graded on fifty percent of that score.
The fire station as a whole, or the fire department as a whole?
The fire department as a whole, that's our deployment of our stations, that's our personnel, that's our equipment, that's our ability to suppress fire, it's the amount of water that we can flow on any given day, there's nine subcategories to that. So, yes, we are graded on our station placement, but it is technically not fifty percent of that grade for, for, it's, I think it's fifteen points in our, in our grading score, for station, locations and deployment of set. So, the fire department can only get fifty points, the water department gets forty points, joint communications gets ten points, and then, our community risk reduction gets five point, five points, or bonus points, if you will. Did I answer your question?
Yes, I do believe so. So, was looking at that, if we were needing a fire, a third fire station immediately, would we have, would our ISO rating have been upgraded to?
So, we scored low on our station deployment, it, it is what it is, I mean, I think we scored six out of ten on our, on our station deployment model. Where we picked up points was, is that, again, like I explained, a number of our members, well, every one of our members took on training, getting all of our training done, getting our hydrants blow tested and flushed, they also worked on pre-planning, which is points that we didn't get last time, because we hadn't, we didn't do pre-planning at the time, so, we made up a number of points in those categories. Councilman Oldham's point of, is our two in jeopardy, so, we received a score of eighty point nine, seven points, eighty points is the break over for the, from the two to the three. So, for me to sit here and say that that's not necessarily in jeopardy, yes, it is in jeopardy, because if the city grows, we took a hit for annexing in Cloverdale and the State, Missouri State Fair property, because there's no hydrants out there, so, we took a hit on our points for that. If we continue to annex and do those kind of things, yes, we could be in jeopardy of losing our two. I think there's, there are some other things that we can do to add and solidify that, and one of those is, is case in point, is, is that we received one point on our ISO rating for our fire code, because at the time that we were being reviewed, we were working out of the 2015 model. ISO did not take into account that we were, we were going to be passing the 2021 version, so, we got one point, whereas in our last ISO rating, we had just adopted the 2015, we were in it, we received ten points. So, there are points that we will gain that we lost this time, because we won't be ten years out of our, of our fire code. So, there, it's a very tricky thing, it's very fluid, but if we were to have a mass expansion of, of the city, yes, Councilman Oldham is correct, we would, we would lose that too.
So, but at this time, we have a little liddlegram on.
We have five years.
Five.
We have five years before we're regraded.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
And this would only come from money from taxation, I mean, we'd have to have some kind of tax increase for this.
You would have, you would have to figure out how to pay for it, I mean, that, that, I mean, what it boils down to is, we add a third station, we have to have personnel to put in it, it's a five million dollar building, roughly, and then, it's twelve people that you have to hire to put on that engine company, you have to purchase an engine to You have to purchase an engine to put in that building. So, it's quite a capital investment. The issue is, is not necessarily the capital investment, it's the investment in people. When we're hiring 12 people to run that engine, which, and run that station, which, again, I have gone on record in saying, I would love to have a third station. I just don't know how we're going to pay for it, or how this body is going to pay for that 980, I forgot, I apologize, I did not, I don't have the number. But let's say with $950,000 for those 12 employees, how do we pay for that on an annual basis? Because that would take our budget for salaries and benefits well over $3 million.
I think definitely we're going to have to look in the future at adding stations, but right now, I think everybody's maxed out on taxation.
I don't disagree.
I mean, I think that, and I would love, if we could afford it, I would love to have more stations, I would love to have more police officers, but right now...
And that ties to your point of if you hired 12 firefighters, which I, again, I would love to have, my department would love to have. But at some point, you're going to need more police officers, you're going to need more sanitation, you're going to need more water, you're going to need more sewer workers, you're going to need more staffing if we grow. How do we balance all of that?
Right.
And I think when it comes to affordability, the community is telling us that they want to move to a three-station model. The north side is telling us they want a fire station in the north side. We are annexing as each council session grows, as each council session continues on. And so, if this motion was to pass, there are few options that we can do that, that we can use and pay for that. And so, after the motion, if it was to pass, is I would direct staff in the next council session to provide us the few options we need in the brief presentation so we can make our decision of how we need to proceed with paying.
Well, now, there's a train during this day that stops, and the fire department is notified, and we send the fire engine over there.
At this current time, with the Washington Street by dock down.
So, that's really helped us out, for a while, I would think.
Well, I'm just going to throw this on the deck. I've talked to several people, not only in my ward, but in Ward 4, and Ward 2, and Ward 1, probably 60, 65 people in the last two weeks. Out of 65 people, 60 people told me, no, they were not in favor of more taxes. And I get that, you know, I'm on fixed income, I don't know that I want more tax, so...
Doesn't have to be a tax.
Well, but we were told by staff that the only way physically be able to pay for this is we were going to have to ask the citizens to pass a tax, and it ain't going to pass.
One, we don't know that, and two, it doesn't have to be a tax.
I'm just telling you what we were told.
I understand, and I understand there's going to be opposition.
I'm not going to grandstand to nobody, I'm not going to grandstand to nobody. This is a tough deal. But right now, right now, you know, looking at the map where everything is covered with the last five years of fires, we're within our four minutes' response time. Our ISO would not have gone down if that would have been part of, you know, if that was such a big important part of it. As the citizens go, I said, I commented when we talked about putting the cameras up, I made a comment, north side wants another station. But realistically, where the station needs to go is south, it needs to go southwest. That's where the growth of citizens and the homes are going right now, and that we're annexing the hell out of land over there, okay? So, that's where it needs to go to cover homes.
And the high school.
Most, yeah, and the high school. Most businesses, most businesses, when they build their buildings, have a way to help the fire department. David, you just build a building, you probably put sprinkler system in. Well, that's what I'm saying. So, you know, the industry is going to pretty much kind of help us, but the citizens in their homes, they're in their homes. That's where, that's why I feel it's going to have to go south. But in the future, we're going to have to, we're going to have to go there.
We needed to get there 10 years ago. And so, what previous administrations and councils have done has kicked the can down the road. And once again, unfortunately, this council has been burdened with some very hard decisions. We should have prepared and budgeted for our north wastewater treatment site center 15, 20 years ago. We should have prepared and budgeted for a third fire station 10 years ago. And those councils have kicked the can down the road. And now, we're at a point where we have a failing wastewater plant, and two, we have several residents in several areas in our community within our city limits that are not covered by a fire safety area. So, what do we do? Do we kick the can down another five years down the road as we're annexing properties in the south pier and the northwest of here and the north of here, and we just give them five more years of the delayed response time? Or do we make the hard decision of what the people have elected us to do is to make these hard decisions to make sure they're safe? We spent $175,000 on five tornado sirens that will probably get used two weeks out of the year. Why can't we make the hard decision to make sure the rest of Sedalia is safe of something that we should have done 10 years ago and started moving forward a three-station model? That's my statement.
Anyone else want to buy a desk? For me, it's just timing, and I don't think it's timed yet. I mean, we're going to need three stations, but we're going to see a report pretty quickly about the Washington Street Bridge, and I think that's, in the long run, we're going to have to replace it. We don't know where that is. It's going to be, we have the potential for a lot of growth in a lot of these subdivisions that are planned, but we're not seeing, we don't have anything going there right now. We're not seeing an expansion. I have to, I can't recall the last time I saw a significant expansion in the city limits of Sedalia. I think we need to talk about that to people in and around Sedalia. And when we do see that growth, I very much agree with Councilman Oldham, we're going to need a third station. But I, mainly, the deal killer for me is not the station, it's the fact that we have to add those personnel and that expense before we have the need for all of that coverage, and we've got other places to spend that money. So, I don't think it's, I think it's coming in the future, but right now, I think it's, I'm not going to, I'm happy with two-station model right now. Anyone else?
Yeah, I think the most important thing we can do right now is to repair, no, I'm sorry, rebuild the central fire station, because we have firemen living there under circumstances that none of us would do, we just wouldn't do it. So, I understand we need three stations, but we need two stations first.
That's a good point, Jim. Any further discussion regarding the motion that's on the floor? So, the motion you're going to be voting on is the motion to move to a three-station model. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Jason, if you could poll the council, please.
Absolutely. Robinson?
No.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus is absent. Hiller?
No.
Cross?
No.
Foster?
No.
Bliss?
No.
We got six no, one yes, one absent.
Okay, motion fails.
Thanks for the opportunity, Steve.
Anybody else from the council have anything they want to add before we move along?
Well, the block rate's coming up.
Yep. It's win today at 10:00 AM, I believe.
A lot, Tom was right about the day of service, too. A lot of people there, wonderful thing to see, positive thing about Sedalia and Pettis County. People from in and out, inside city limits, outside city limits, receive benefits, and people from inside city limits, outside city limits did the work. And it really is a lot of work to get done in a short amount of time. My, they wore out my old dump truck.
Think the line is up, too, they provided lunch.
Line is up, providing lunch, yeah.
Anyone else before we move along on the agenda? All right, having heard none, ladies and gentlemen, we now arrive at the Good and Welfare section of our agenda. Before we begin, I'd like to remind everyone of the framework for this segment. Each speaker is requested to step forward, clearly state their name, address, and will be allotted three minutes to make a statement. Please note, this is not a session for dialogue or debate with the council, nor is it a period of questions and answers. It is a time for you to make your voice heard, for us to listen, and your statements to be entered into the public record. We ask that all remarks be kept respectful and pertinent, community members. You all up?
My name is Nikki Bullock, and I live at 506 Sunset Drive, and they built a new car wash up there on Broadway in a dispensary. But they're taking that field behind our house in between apartments in our, in the houses, the grass is already like five feet tall. And 4th of July coming up, kids shooting off fireworks, all it's going to take is one little spark, and they've got it screened off where you couldn't get back there with a fire truck if you wanted to, or like if power goes out. I mean, they're saying that we don't own that back section no more outside the fence. But, yeah, they're not taking care of it. And my husband, he's been mowing, you know, fairly a good strip outside the gate because we've been getting possums in the yard and everything, and they need to do something with that field because right now, it's a fire hazard.
Point of information. I mentioned that I've talked to Devon in conference tomorrow, she's actually here. So, Devon, if we could just take a look at Tommy's car wash, make sure they're maintaining the property and everything, I appreciate it. There we go, guys. Taking care of it.
All right, next.
Hello, David Gibson, 1630 Hedge Apple Drive. Guys, you know, our group is called Seeing Sedalia Succeed. We're not an official group per se, but that's what we've dubbed our new Facebook page. We urge everybody to check that out. I've had the pleasure of meeting with most every city council member at least once, maybe twice, with the exception of Ms. Foster, who hasn't been on time in her schedule, and Mayor Dawson, who has declined our offer to meet with us. So, I thank you all for meeting with us. When I've met with you all, and you've learned of some of the issues going on with businesses, citizens, and everybody in the community, some of you walked away with, I'm embarrassed, I'm appalled, I'm surprised, things have got to change. Well, I'm here to tell you guys, it hasn't changed. It's not changing, Steve. And if any of us ran our business the way that Calvin Charles run in this city, we would be out of business. It is time for change. We have three positions in this city who've done major damage to it. We've got to get it under control. Tom, I thank you. I think Chief Irwin, I want you to have three stations. We want good fire protection. I'm with you guys. Nobody wants more taxes, but there's got to be a way to pay for it. I've got a good idea. Start cleaning house, make Sedalia inviting to do business in, have growth, have developers who want to come here, quit running business off, and do your job as council. The people who need to be fired, get control of it. When you have to train people on how to write a letter, how to be softer, how to have good on your personal skills, you've got the wrong person in the job. And when you guys do get the courage to do the right thing, that should be a committee of citizens who are qualified to vet and interview that person and make the right hire. It should not be a succession plan. This is not a small business. It should be a nationwide search for the right candidate who checks all of the boxes. You guys have got to act. It is a tough job. You can't just sit up there and not do nothing, or just listen to people speak. We are listening to new people every week with new problems. And Mayor, I applaud that you would sell rusty cars, if there's a problem, let me know. But we should not be doing that. There should not be problems where we've got to reach out to somebody, reach out to the mayor to get something solved. We shouldn't even let it get to that point. And if we do the right things, we will have growth, and we will have Sedalia being inviting. We need to do the right thing and clean some house up. Thank you.
All right, next. Come on up.
My name is Susan Fleazy. I live at 1800 East 22nd Street out of Eaglebrook Farm. Some time ago, I called the city offices to complain about a resident in our neighborhood who lives at 1820 Apple Tree Lane. He brings, he owns a business in that neighborhood, and he brings in big equipment and piping and other equipment to operate his business, some of which he stores in his backyard. Eaglebrook Farm is zoned residential. I was told by a woman, this is good, where I made a call down to City Hall, that it is legal to operate a business out of a person's house. It's always been that way. The woman at City Hall also told me that because this man was well-respected in the community, it was okay for him to do this. I recently found out that it is not legal. According to Section 63-37 regarding residential neighborhoods, the single-family residential district is intended to provide for low-density residential youth area developed in a manner that reflects a suburban character. Operating a business in one's own house may be legitimate, but bringing in big equipment materials for the business to store in the backyard is not reflective of a suburban character. In addition to this, trailers are often not hooked up to a truck and do not have license plates on them. What I'm asking for the city to do is to enforce ordinances and state laws that have been passed for a reason. My husband and I have lived here in this neighborhood for 28 years and wish for it to remain nice and quiet. There are a lot of nice people in the neighborhood who wish for it to remain that way also. There's 19 acres just north of and adjacent to this neighborhood. Twice, people have tried to rezone this land, first for commercial use and then for multi-family duplexes. The people in this neighborhood rebelled and stopped it. When houses in this neighborhood go up for sale, they often sell fast because there's little crime and people like the ambiance that this neighborhood offers. We want to help keep our neighborhood that way. I appreciate you listening to my complaint and hope that this problem will be resolved.
May I ask the address?
He lives at 1820 Apple Tree Lane.
My name is Gary Lowball. I live at 821 South Ardenham Avenue, and I'd like some information about the bridge. Is it going to be repaired? Is it going to be blowed up? Is it going to be what? I mean, I imagine I'm in a room full of Republicans, but I'm going to mention Clinton ran on an, it's economy stupid, it's the bridge. The bridge gave you a good response time, better response time than what you're going to have now. Fix the bridge. It's the easiest, it's the cheapest way. Then, we'll figure out the fire departments later, but fix the bridge so the people will have adequate response now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Point of information. I mentioned July 7th as the meeting. Thank you, Ms. Renee. It's July 9th, that'll be the workshop for you.
All right, I'm next.
Hi, guys. Corey City, 1804 South Park, you know me. So, I was here a month ago. I don't know that the council meeting from two weeks ago is posted online to watch, so I didn't get to watch the end, but I'm going to assume there's no list of property for sale that the city owns and wants to sell yet. That'd be great, just appreciate that. Also, do you guys have something against the people that live at Grand and Wilkerson? Because that corner's still not fixed. And literally, you guys went at Grand and Third and replaced the blocks with a sidewalk, and nobody came down. But they're like, they're taller than I am when you walk by, it seems. I agree with Oldham and Robinson. Is, have we thought about just a quick, easy solution for another fire station is renovate? I mean, two would be better than one currently. It seems like the idea of having to build a new central station, if we're spending money, what's the difference between three, one, if we're spending money? Also, can we actually get a, like, is there somewhere you can view the ISO scoring, how that works? Be very interesting, because it seemed like from your explanation that only 5.5 points of that score is made up of basically non-fire police or emergency services. So, would that be things like code enforcement, stuff like that? Is that not 5.5 points? No? Okay. Yeah, if we could get a breakdown of that, that'd be wonderful, something to look for, try to look for that, can see it. And, yeah, as always, providing audio of the through-the-week meetings, again, just a quick link to be easy. And the same, why does it take two weeks to post last week's meeting? It seems like it should be a one-button upload of a video file. So, appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Say. Up next, anyone up?
Debbie Covington, 2601 East 12th. Respectfully, request all meetings to be livestreamed on the Sedalia Facebook page and also on the website. I've been following some municipalities of the same size as Sedalia, and they are doing that, so it is definitely possible, it's 2024. And then, a question about the fire station. The central station bill, was that a training center as well? So, we're building a central station on Fifth Street behind the old fire station and a training center, but we're not contemplating the three-station model. Got it? Also, I was wondering if the council was aware that the landfill is dumping leachate toxins into the Sedalia wastewater treatment facility? Do you guys know that that happens? That comes straight from DNR? Are you all aware of that? So, that is actually happening, and I was wondering if you all feel that that could possibly be a reason as to why we have the issue now with, granted, it's old, I get it, it has to be renovated, but it could be a reason why we're having some of the issues we're having right now. Did you all make a decision on what plan you're going to go with as far as the water treatment facility, and if you're going to ask for the extra $10 million? Or are you going to ask for the extra $10 million to, if you're going to go with the Plan B? But, yeah, that's it. The main thing here is the live streaming. I think it would be amazing for the community, especially the people that can't be here. It's just a click on the Facebook, a click on the website, there's municipalities doing it, it's not hard. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Jim Arkham, two-one-five-two-four Main Street Road, Sedalia, Missouri. I just, um, I've been talking to our chief, fire chief, Mike Hardy. And, uh, we would like to see if we can help some way for the north side of town, or we could help on mutual aid, until you can get some funds figured around for a while. I don't know if you got to change the talk to him that or not. Uh, I was just texting a minute ago, just asking if it's all right if I stand up and volunteer his services. And he said he would like to help you all work, you know, strictly on, on the north side of town. We have one right outside by Niko, right out there, that could possibly help you guys. So, I'm just making a, an offer for you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Kevin Lujan, four oh eight West Twenty-Second Street. Um, a couple of things. Um, first and foremost, I noticed, Chief Irwin, you got very close to your mic tonight. That helps so much with the audio. So, I would just ask if at some point we can look at the placement of the microphones for everybody speaking, watching the YouTube videos. It's, I think it will help a great deal, even if you decide not to do Facebook. I just think that will help a lot. Um, second of all, uh, I work at the Windsor Review. Uh, it, Nicole Camp, Courier, and Lincoln New Era, the current plans are the last print issue will be running July fifth, this Friday. There's still some things that may be in the works where they may survive in one shape or form or another. But in case you haven't noticed, we've had a lot of challenges with our media right now. And so, I would encourage all business owners and governments, both city and county, especially, you know, we have Chris Howell from the Sedalia Democrat here. We have Randy Klubey from KSIS, and that's a huge help to our citizens. So, I think any way that you can support local media, again, two times is better than none. And again, like I said, uh, if you could take a look at that, because that, I think it's a good part of your marketing mix, no matter how you look at it. Lastly, uh, I want to thank the council members who spoke at Packerdurn. I encourage any of those, if you have any interest, we'd, we would love to have you at Packerdurn Club in the future. Uh, but one other thing, again, echoing on the importance of media. One of the council members specifically spoke about the importance of historic information, uh, talking about it in matters that you've read about this year, specifically the Arrow and Devon Ibert, ran the Democrat. And for those of you that didn't know, he was just selected to the Missouri Newspaper Hall of Fame. If you don't have that historic record out there, our kids and our grandkids are going to have a hard time learning from what we do right and what we do wrong here. So, again, that's just why I would strongly encourage you to look at that. Lastly, for those of you that know, this is the fiftieth anniversary of the Ozark Music Festival. The, uh, the stories of the Ozark Music Festival, the documentary film that prompted a lot of interest in it, that's being shown in Independence on July nineteenth through twenty-first. If you're interested in going to it to really see the details from folks like Jim Mathiason and folks like that, just go to Despin, Ben, Despin Films Facebook group. It's the best twenty-dollar movie you'll ever see. So, thank you.
Hey, very good. Well, with that, we're going to go and move along on our agenda. Uh, Director, I do have a point of information for Director Simmons. Do we have a need to go on the closed session? Would you not? Okay. So, with that, I will go ahead and call for a meeting to adjourn. The Lewis can do adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion, second to adjourn. Do I have any council of session? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Olden?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus is absent. Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
All right.